Do we want to get started?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whose is this? Whose little disc is this? Do you have a card for me? Thank you.
So, Bob, do we want to go ahead and get started on the presentation?
That would be great.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I just noticed we have public comment. Okay. Did you want to comment after he speaks? Or do you have something real quick you want to say before he presents? This is the workshop. This is the workshop.
The board meeting hasn't started. It won't start for an hour and a half or so. So, this is just the... Oh, we're not there. You're still an hour before we do it. We're up on the pre-workshop right now.
Oh, yeah.
So, you're going to get to number four at 5:30 or... Well, let's see. This one goes from 4:30 then... That's before going into closed session? Is that what you're wanting? I want a comment on item number four.
Closed session.
That's what the card says, number four. Public comment on closed session item?
Okay, okay, got it. About 5:30?
No, it's 4:30.
Twenty of, or so. About thirty minutes from right now.
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, yeah, this is just a...
Oh, yeah.
...informal workshop, yeah, absolutely. I assume much of you be frustrated, you know, hitting on.
It says, "Please state your name before speaking." So, I'm Bob Parker. And we're here to talk about the bids and contracts processes here at Napa Valley College. Oh, thank you.
And you want to close this? Well, I don't want to kill it.
No, it's okay. No, it's all...
But we can't... Oh, now we can see it, okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So, just wanted to go over where we are with board policies and administrative procedures having to do with the bids and contracts process here at Napa Valley College and to point out some things that are currently in place and what we are working on as we move forward. And so, first of all, the overall board policy on bids and contracts is BP 6340. And BP 6340 was last revised on January 15 of 2015. Now, we have, as I think you're aware, engaged an analyst from the Community College League of California to work with us on our board policies and our admin... What we used to call administrative regulations, they are... We're now calling them administrative procedures and to make sure that we have everything that we need to have in place. And so, as a result of that review of that existing board policy, the analyst is just suggesting that we make a few minor revisions and it's basically cleaning up or clearing up language having to do with how the process works and the superintendent president's role in overseeing that process or delegating that process. So, very... Some very minor changes have been suggested to that board policy. In connection with that board policy, there are a number of administrative procedures, some that are legally required, some that are suggested or advised. And so, we'll look at each of them individually. And so, the first one is Administrative Procedure 6340 that is legally required and it covers the quote and bid requirements. It covers bid specifications, the formal bid process, and the awarding of bids and contracts. So, we will be bringing that forward to our constituent groups based on the information that we've gotten from CCLC and from the analyst for their review and their endorsement. But we do currently have something in place that addresses most... Actually, addresses all of those items. And that is the document that was presented to you in 2015. It was created in 2015 and presented... Well, I guess it wasn't presented to all of you, but it was presented to some of you in 2015. And that is the document that we call How to Do Business with the Napa Valley Community College District. It's posted on our Business and Finance Office website under Purchasing. And what it covers... So, remember, there were those... There are those four items that are required in Administrative Procedure 6340. The first is quote and bid requirements. And those are actually... And I'll open the document in a minute. But those are actually addressed on page six of that document. Bid specifications are addressed on page eight of that document. The formal bid process is addressed on pages seven and eight of that document. And then, finally, the process for awarding of bids and contracts is addressed on page nine of that document. And so, let me just quickly move to that document, or at least where that document is located. So, if you go to the Napa Valley College website, the Administrative Services page, on the Administrative Services page, there's a page for Business and Finance. Under Business and Finance, we have a Purchasing subsection, and that vendor information, How to Do Business with Napa Valley Community College District, is listed there. And so, the elements that are included in How to Do Business with Napa Valley Community College District will be incorporated into Administrative Procedure 6340. And so, if we look at page six of this document, you can see that page six indicates what those quote and bid requirements are. So, it says, "Small consumable items less than $5,000 may be made by purchase requisition without the quote or bid process. Informal quotes would be required for anything over $5,000 but less than $85,999." And there is... And that number has actually changed recently. It goes up based on the... Every year, based on the Consumer Price Index. But that is a number that comes to us from the state of California, and we are required to do a formal bid process for anything that meets or exceeds that dollar amount. So, our current bid requirements, small purchases, less than 5,000, do not require quotes or bids. Informal quotes would be required for anything from 5,000 to $85,999. And it just says, "Three written quotes are required for any goods or services that fall into that dollar amount." Now, there may be times... There are a couple of exceptions to this rule. There may be times... And these are also exceptions to public bidding as well. There may be times when there is a sole source for a particular item, or it's a vendor that we have used in the past and have a good working relationship with. And so, at those times, we may allow a department to use the same vendor without going out for three informal quotes. And then, finally, if you look at the bottom of the page, it says Cooperative and Piggyback Agreements. And so, if there are existing contracts that have been negotiated through a formal bid process, for example, the Foundation for California Community Colleges negotiates a number of contracts for the purchase of items at community college districts, we are permitted to piggyback on that contract and use that contract to make a purchase because the understanding is that the... A process of getting formal bids has already taken place.
Do you want questions as we go or at the end?
I think questions as we go are fine.
Okay. So, I'm wondering, how do services that are ongoing, how do they fit in this? Is it in a year? If they added up to be these amounts within a year? Or how does that work if it's just kind of like an ongoing service, like a monthly service, for example?
So, typically, we would look at if we are engaging in a... Or creating a contract that will meet any of those dollar thresholds in the course of a year, we would be looking at following these bid and quote requirements for that. Now, if we're renewing an existing contract, and so, for example, I'll use... We pay a significant amount of money every year to the Illucian Company, and they are the people who provide our ERP system, the colleague system, for us. And we pay them a little less than $400,000 a year to license that product. When we first purchased that product in 2004, we went through a formal bid process for that. And so, as we renew that licensing agreement with them, we're not getting additional quotes for that because they are the only provider of support for that particular product. If we were deciding that we were going to replace that product with something else, then we would go through a formal bid process.
My last question. Let's say they weren't the only one that offered that service. Is there a certain... After so many years, do you have to go back out for... If there's a service that you've... Let's say you did a contract, and after five years or six years, is there a time where you need to go back out and pursue one of these processes depending on how much it is?
Right. So, we don't currently have any time limits in place. There are some time limits that are given to us by state and federal requirements. So, for example, you know from our discussions at the Audit Committee that we are limited in the number of years that we can use a certified public accounting firm for our audit. And so, we have to go out after a certain period of years for a formal bid process for those services. And so, there are requirements like that in place that supersede or give us additional requirements over and above what we have in the document.
Because I'd asked you about the legal service... I got a copy of the Legal Services contract, and it's from 2011. What about that, Legal Services? We signed our original contract with LCW in 2012. So, is there a time where we need to go back out and pursue a quote or a bid?
There's not a required time limit for that, no. Okay. So, that was... Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't cover everything here. Yes, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
I have another question here.
I just wanted to clarify when it says it's informal but written. Does that mean like an email or something with that? Or does it... Is there a format that that has to take?
So, we would expect to receive a written quote from the vendor. So, something... In most cases, it would be more than an email. But when it says informal, what it means is that we wouldn't be advertising the solicitation of bids and having a formal bid opening that if Catherine wants to purchase an item that costs $10,000, we would expect that she would present us with evidence that she has gone to three different vendors and asked for three different quotes for that item.
And if there's less than three, then you would say there's two because there's only two?
Yes. So, for example, we ran into that situation, and I hate to bring this up because it mentions Wells Fargo, but we ran into that situation a year ago, two years ago, when we were looking to purchase student insurance. And at the time, there were really only two vendors in the state of California that offered that. I'm happy to say there are three now. And so, we will be looking at three bids for that. And Wells Fargo sold that business, so it's no longer Wells Fargo. But in that case, we only had two vendors who we could go to. Yes?
For the small purchases, just talks about consumable items. Are services in that category as well?
So, services would fall into that category as well. And you will see that there is an administrative procedure which we will be implementing prior to the fall semester that covers services as well and outlines what a service is and what the requirements are for services.
Why don't we go ahead and complete the...
Sure.
...your presentation, then we'll go from there with the questions.
Okay, okay, fine. So, the other thing I mentioned, bid specifications are covered on page eight. So, what are the specifications of that bid process? The formal bid process is also here. And then, finally, the awarding of bids and contracts is covered on page nine. So, most of the information that would be included in Administrative Procedure 6340 exists in this document and will be incorporated into the formal administrative procedure. The next administrative procedure, which hasn't really been at... Certainly, in my tenure here, hasn't been something that we've needed to refer to, and that is Contracts for Construction. And so, that's Administrative Procedure 6350. And what would be included, and this is not required, but it's legally advised, and it makes sense that we would have this. And certainly, as we look later tonight at what construction projects could be happening here on campus, that is certainly something that we would want to have in place. And so, it talks about planning and programming of new construction, alterations and repairs to existing facilities, and then, finally, leasing facilities. And so, that is not something that we currently have in place. It's not a legally required administrative procedure, but it is something that we will be implementing. The next, again, legally advised, not required, is Administrative Procedure 6360, and it specifically addresses electronic systems and materials. And so, it extends what's in Administrative Procedure 6340 to cover the purchase of data processing systems and equipment, telecommunication equipment, and related materials, goods, and services. So, things of that... Of that nature. So, to the extent that we have the elements of Administrative Procedure 6340 in place, we do have the elements that would be included in an Administrative Procedure 6340. And we'll also be discussing a little later in tonight's agenda, the Technology Plan and what will be included in the Technology Plan. And the acquisition of electronic systems and materials will also be addressed in the Technology Plan. Another element that will be addressed in the Technology Plan is Administrative Procedure 6365. And this has to do with accessibility of information technology. It is legally required, and it covers achieving a certification from vendors that any electronic or information technology complies with the requirements of Section 508. So, that is not addressed in How to Do Business with Napa Valley College. We do, however, have on our DSPS website links to the information that is included in being compliant with Section 508. We do police, to the... To an extent, the purchases that are being made of things like DVDs and other video equipment to make sure that they are in compliance with Section 508. And you will also see when we look at the outline of our draft Technology Plan that we include a reference to Section 508 and compliance with Section 508 in that document as well. Contracts for Personal Services, and this, Trustee Martenson, I think is what you were referring to. It is legally required, and it covers conditions under which the district may enter into personal service contracts. It also defines the difference between a professional expert, an independent contractor, and a consultant. That would be included in that document. Now, we do have existing documents that relate to the requirements of Administrative Procedure 6370. First of all, in How to Do Business with Napa Valley Community College District, we do indicate that we expect our vendors, if we are contracting with someone to provide a service to us, that they are paying fair wages in that contract. On the Business and Finance Office website, we do have an independent contractor section that includes our existing independent contractor agreement, the determination of independent contractor status, and a checklist that we require everyone to complete to indicate what services... What level of oversight the district will have on the services that are provided. And that checklist comes from the IRS requirements for determining whether something is truly the work of an independent contractor or if it's the work of what should be considered a salaried employee. And so, to the extent that someone sets their own hours, provides a certain level of expertise, brings their own equipment, brings their own supplies, questions of that nature. You don't have to answer yes or no to all of them, but the preponderance of evidence has to indicate that the person is working independently and not in a status that would be... Would be viewed by the IRS as being a... An employee of the district. And then, finally, that description, what's an independent contractor? What's a professional expert? What's a consultant? Well, professional experts at Napa Valley College are hired through the Human Resources Department. And every month, when you approve that monthly HR document, there is a section... There won't always necessarily be somebody listed in that section. But there is a section that reflects those individuals who we are hiring as professional experts. So, there's a category within our HR department that indicates what a professional expert is, and that determination is made through our Human Resources Department. So, as I say, we do have that definition of an independent contractor and the definition of a professional expert currently in place. And then, finally, the last administrative procedure that is recommended but is not required, it's an optional administrative procedure, is Administrative Procedure 6380, which has to do with vendors. So, it covers... Would cover the process for permitting a vendor to operate on district property, process for student groups, employees, and external groups to apply to vend on campus. It would identify the district personnel with approval authority. Now, in How to Do Business with Napa Valley College, we do include general information regarding a vendor's interaction with the district, but we do not address all of the items that would be... Would potentially be included in an optional AP 6380. If you look at the language that the Community College League of California suggests for Administrative Procedure 6380, there's not a lot of specificity in that document because it really is up to the individual entity to determine what they need in that document and what would be included in that document. So, if you look at the templates from the Community College League, many of the templates are very specific. This particular template is a lot more vague because it is, first of all, optional, and it is something that would be determined by each individual entity. So, as I say, those are... If you look at the bid and contract process, those are all of the... The board policy and the administrative procedures recommended to link to that. As I say, we're... We have... We received in March our binder from the analyst of all of the board policies and administrative procedures that fall under the area of Administrative Services or the Business and Finance area. We are working through that document. These will be the first, bringing them to our constituent groups for their review, just their review. We want to stick to the CCLC language as much as possible, but to bring them to them and then have them in place in time for the start of the fall semester. So, that concludes the presentation. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
So, you said they'll be up next year? And I guess... Because I looked at the policy, and I was already actually going to bring this up tonight on future agenda request. I noticed this policy was approved in 2015, and it said the ARs would be pending then, which is like almost three... Well, yeah, three years ago. And I know there have been CCLC templates that... Because I have them. I actually have them. And that's how I knew some of these were legally required. And I guess I'm wondering, why not put up the templates so we have something as we move forward and analyze them? Because it seems like it's a liability. We've been doing all of these things. We've been putting out bids. We put out an RFQ for housing, and we've been signing contracts. We have a contract on our agenda tonight. It just seems like a liability to be doing that when we don't have these ARs that are legally required up. So, I guess that's more for the president. Like, why all this time? Haven't we just had the templates up as we go through them and maybe tweak them a little bit? So, we have something in place.
So, I would only say that our process here, through our participatory governance process, is to bring these to the Council of Presidents for their review. It's not their approval, but it's so that they're aware that they are being put in place. To the extent that we have that document, How to Do Business with Napa Valley College, we incorporate many of the elements that would be in the legally required administrative procedures in that document. That's what will advise what goes into the administrative procedures that we take forward. And it's just the process we'll take since that Council of Presidents includes representatives of the academic senate that Council of Presidents doesn't meet during the summer months. So, we will have the May meeting to discuss it and then approval at the... Or endorsement, I should say, at the August meeting. So, there is a plan in place for getting those documents posted, but we do need to follow that process in order to get those documents formally vetted and endorsed.
I have one more if nobody else does. Do you have one? So, I think it was the last meeting. It came up when we were talking about Napa Broadcasting that we've been auto-recording the meeting since 2015 and that there was... There's been no written contract all that time. It was an oral contract. So, can you talk about oral contracts? Can we have oral contracts?
Well, I think if... I think what happened in that particular case is that there was the presentation... So, first of all, this fell below that $5,000 threshold. And it is my understanding, I wasn't here at that time, but that there was a presentation to the board at that time of three proposals in keeping with the language that is in How to Do Business with Napa Valley Community College District, that there were three... There were three proposals that were received through an informal... I say to call it a bid process, but through an informal process of gathering information. It was as a result of that review and that discussion that the decision was made to go with Napa Broadcasting for that. If we were... And so, at that point, there was a... Typically, what would happen is that a purchase order... A requisition is entered, a purchase order is issued to that vendor based on the quotes that we've received. And it's the purchase order that really serves as the formal official document between that particular vendor and the district.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your wonderful information as usual.
Thank you.
All right. And now, we will... That's too far out of reach. Call the regular meeting to order. And first item that I have on the agenda is... Oh, roll call, sorry. Roll call. I don't know why I always miss that one.
Okay. Trustee Jennifer Baker?
Here.
Trustee Amy Martenson?
Here.
Trustee Rafael Rios?
Here.
Trustee Rosado? Trustee Rosara Segura?
Here.
Trustee Kyle Iverson?
Here.
Trustee Mary Ann Mancuso?
Here.
And, um, trustee Michael Baldini is not present.
Thank you. All right, now, we'll go to item 3.1, resolution in honor of Napa Valley College Classified Professionals, including those who have reached 15 years of service. And who is speaking on that?
Yes.
And you, and can you open that resolution under two point, 3.0?
Here are.
Yeah, there we go.
We are discussing. I need to read the full resolution.
Um, let's see what they want to do first.
Here we go.
Yeah.
So, all of our peeps.
Welcome, Michael. We are at the recognition of classified appreciation, resolution. Resolution is up. I don't know whether you'd like to, for us to read parts of it, or all of it, or just allude to it. What's your?
If you guys would read it.
What's your pleasure? All right.
You want us to read it?
Go ahead.
Okay, great. I'm going to read the big one.
Yeah.
All right. Napa Valley College Classified Professionals. Whereas, Napa Valley College Classified Professionals are an important, valued, and essential part of the educational team, whose shared goal is to provide access to outstanding college programs and services. And whereas, through their professionalism, teamwork, and dedication, Classified Professionals have raised the reputation of the college and the community, and enhanced the educational experience of countless students. And whereas, by the high standards they set for themselves, they demonstrated drive for excellence and contribute in a most meaningful way to the effective implementation of the college's mission. And whereas, they welcome students, parents, community users, and other guests on the campus, to the campus with warmth, generosity of spirit, and keen, and a keen drive to provide excellent service, thereby enhancing the success of events, activities, and interactions throughout. And whereas, they are a modest and self-sacrificing group who work behind the scenes to accomplish much through competing deadlines, crowded days, and ever-evolving challenges and mandates. And whereas, somebody's going to need to scroll. By June, oh, where'd we go? Okay. Whereas, by June 30th, 2018, Mark Martin, Martin Schumacher, and Russ Polston will have reached 15 years of regular service at Napa Valley College, and they, along with other long-serving professionals, have provided stability and continuity to the institution by able training and mentoring new staff at all levels, providing institutional memory and sharing their depth of knowledge with anyone in need. Now, therefore, be it resolved. The Board of Trustees, faculty, and administrative staff sincerely offer thanks and compliments to the Classified Professionals of Napa Valley College.
Hand.
If I could, I'd like to say a few words about the two folks from Facility Services. I'm Matt Christensen, Director of Facility Services. And Marty and Russ have worked with me in the department since they were hired. So, Russ started in November of 2002, and Marty started in December of 2002. They are unique transition employees for the Facilities Department, because they actually started the hiring process before our successful bond in 2002, and then they started right after it passed. So, they've been here through the duration of that construction and helped us transition through that. So, the other thing that makes them somewhat unique, and they're kind of, I don't want to talk about their age at all, but they, of course, I will. They are both, a couple of folks that have spent time in their prior lives working at Mare Island. And as any of you that have been around for a long time know, that that was quite a transition when Mare Island Naval Shipyard went through the closure process. But again, there, here's a couple of employees that helped gain some of their experience that they now have brought to Napa Valley College. Marty's the HVAC mechanic, Russ is the plumber, and they bring a lot of other skills beyond just that. Again, it's a testament to their age, I'll say that. They have life experiences that they brought with them to Napa Valley College. They're hitting the, just past the 15-year mark, but they had employment before they came to the college. One of the things that I would like to point out is, is it's always challenging, through that, through that resolution, there were a lot of comments about working behind the scenes and things, and these guys do a fantastic job of that. One of the other things that they've done over the last few years, we've been short a mechanic, and they have both stepped up and picked up additional duties, painting, the swimming pool, other things, fire, or fire, or high, extinguisher inspections, and have really helped out the district as we transitioned and tried to fill that vacancy. So, again, I'd like to acknowledge both of these guys as excellent team players, and very glad to have them here in our department and at Napa Valley College.
You can go. Yeah. So, we just need.
We need that photo op again.
Resolution here. I think I'll just get in the photo with these two guys.
She's saying, "We, she forgotten."
All right, thank you.
And Oscar, are you introducing Mark?
We need an action.
Mark's not here, but I will say, I guess I will say a few words for Mark. And, and actually, I thought Mark was going to be here, and Chris Farmers was, was going to be making these remarks. But I do want to say this, is that Mark Martin has been with us for 15 years. The very, I guess, the, the greatest thing that I like about Mark Martin is that he was on the hiring committee. So, so we enjoy him for having him here. But, but no, but since then, he's been working in the transfer center. He was a specialist assigned to assisting students and guiding students on, on how to ease the transfer to, to four-year schools. Currently, he's working with, with the Project Rise. And basically, what he's doing is that he's at the high schools literally every day of the week. And so, he's the one that's assisting us with, with showing the students how to navigate our, our system, but also making certain that whatever steps they need to take, they take them. Again, Mark has been a great individual. One thing that I've learned about Mark in the last three years is he's an artist. And his artist is focused, is focused on Mexican-American art. In fact, he had an exhibit in Richmond about three months ago, and myself and other members on the campus went to visit him and his, and his exhibition. And it was, it was tremendous. He has great dedication to, to his art, but he has great dedication, dedication to Napa Valley College, and that's why he's so special to us and a special, and especially to me, because he hired me. So, but yeah, but thank you. And so, Mark, wherever you may be, welcome. Thank you.
If, if Mark and, and who else was it? Yeah, Chris, roll in. We'll, we'll do the photo op with you guys and do that. So, thank you very much. It's, it's great work. I believe that we are going to move on to 3.2, which is emeritus status for classified.
Oh, do you, I do have electronic voting to approve this resolution open?
You got it.
I need a motion and a second. Do you have your voting open?
It hasn't popped up, but move for approval.
Second. Iverson, motion, and Segura, second. And it's not, it's, you don't see it? It's not working?
No.
Okay. Okay, we'll do it without electronic voting.
It's a roll call.
Oh. Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Mancuso?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Segura?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
And Trustee Martenson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Congratulations. Now, we'll move on to item 3.2. Carolyn Sanchez, emeritus status.
This item is, is really in recognition of a classified employee's appreciation as well. So, the recommendation is approve action for the application of Carolyn Sanchez for emeritus status. It's an honorary title awarded to recognize distinguished and honorable service of retirees and to encourage continued association with the college. It may be granted to qualified academic, classified, or administrative staff upon retirement or other separation. Michael Rayford, President of the Classified Senate and interim Vice President, Academic Affairs Assessor, recommends that the Board of Trustees grant emeritus status to the following retired but classified member, which in this case is Carolyn Sanchez.
Do we have any other, Eric, any comments or anything before we take a vote on that?
I don't see her here tonight. I can just say that Carol, Carolyn has been one of the, part of the backbone of this college for a very long time, and has served the college extraordinarily well in her roles. I first met her and first worked with her when she worked as the Assistant for Judy Walter Burke in what's now the Office of Research Planning and Institutional Effectiveness, and had her quiet, but, quiet but gentle guidance as I learned how to navigate the accreditation process the first time I worked with that for the college. She's been a tremendous employee here at the college and a tremendous friend to everyone here at the college for many years, and we're really, really honored to extend this honorary title to her.
Thank you.
So, we need a motion.
So, we need a motion. So, moved. Baker moves, and Iverson, second. Are we doing this electronic?
We can try.
Okay.
It is open. You're not seeing, we'll fix it during closed session.
Okay. Go ahead and do the roll call.
Okay, roll call voting. Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Mancuso?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Segura?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
And Trustee Martenson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we move to 4.1, public comment for closed session. And I do have a card. I don't see him.
I don't see him.
He was here. Okay, we have a card for James Hinton for public comment for item number four, but I do not see him present, so we will adjourn into.
Why don't you read what we're going to do, and then you can.
I'm sorry. All right. At this time, the board will devote a total up to 15 minutes to comments to the Board Trustees regarding closed session. Agenda items and visuals will be limited to five-minute presentation, closed session, public comment, and guidelines following public, I'm sorry, Ron. Where do you want me to?
We're here for this conference with labor negotiators. That's the only thing we're doing.
Oh, sorry, everyone.
That's fine.
So, we're moving into closed session for Conference with Labor Negotiators. Thank you.
Now, we can go.